I guess. A happy camper today, but.
Huh?
She's not a happy camper.
Good evening. Today is Monday, June 3rd. It's 5:30 and I called to order the city council work session. We're going to start off with the city update with Mr. McCain.
Thank you, sir. The city of Pueblo has partnered through ARPA Dollars with the Boys and Girls Club of Pueblo County to open the Loft Teen Center for Summer of 2024. This is open Fridays and Saturdays from 1:00 PM to 11:30 PM, beginning Friday, June 7th through Saturday, August 3rd. You can now register for the Gridiron Heroes Youth Flag Football from June 1st through August 2nd. Registry fee is $65. The season is September 7th through October 12th with games played on Saturdays at Lake Minnetqua Veterans Memorial Park. For more info, visit pueblo.usu sports or call 719-553-2790. The swimming pools, regular season with city pools begins Tuesday, June 4th and is open through August 18th. City Park and Mineral Palace Park Pool Schedule Session 1 is 12 to 2:30 PM. Session 2 is 3 to 5:30 PM. Ray Aguilar Park Pool and Mitch, I think it's Mitchell Park Pool, is open from 12 to 5:00 PM. Ages 2 and under are free at all pools. 3 to 17 are $3 or $1.50 at the Mitchell Park Pool. Ages 18 and over are $4 or $2 at the Mitchell Park Pool. Swim passes are $60 per pass and good for 25 pool admissions at any city of Pueblo Parks and Recreation Outdoor Pool. And that concludes my update.
Thank you for that update. Any questions, comments on the update? All right, we'll move on to the lobbyist wrap-up. We have Gil, Alec and Ryan Romero from Capital Success. It's great to see you guys in person. And thanks for doing this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, President Aleph, Mayor Graham, members of city council. It's a a pleasure to be here tonight in person to see you and to tell you that we survived the 2024 legislative session. But not only to say we survived, I want to say that Pueblo had a really strong voice at the state capitol this year and it was not because of us, it was because of you. It was because of the input that you gave us and the opportunity for us to convey to not only our local delegation, but leadership in both the Senate and the House, the President Fenberg and Speaker McCluskey. And so Pueblo really was able to hear from all of you on a lot of important issues. When we were privileged to get this opportunity to represent the city of Pueblo, and it is a privilege, we promised that we would do four things and we would try to do them to the best of our ability. One was we were going to try to get you as timely information on legislation and get that information to you so that you could make decisions before that legislation was heard in committee or debated in committee hearings or on the floor of the House or the Senate. And we did that both through our bill tracker, our emails and also in communication with all of you personally. The other, the other, the second thing that we wanted to do is to make sure that Pueblo had a voice that when they discussed whether it was land use or environment or economic development, that they heard what those bills or that legislation, how that impacted Southern Colorado and specifically Pueblo. And that happened as well on a number of really key bills which we're going to talk about tonight. The other, the third piece of what we promised was building relationships with our Southern Colorado delegation. We were communicating with them every single day of the session to tell them Pueblo's position on any, any number of bills that we were following on your behalf. We had strong relationships. One of the things that we want to strengthen this next year is a better and a stronger relationship with the governor's office. We, we worked with their legislative liaison, but I felt like we still need to build a stronger relationship there. And then finally, building communication with the community of Pueblo. And in that fashion, we obviously met with the Chamber of Commerce. We were involved in the public leadership calls on Wednesdays with PEDCO and worked with them very well on a number of key pieces of legislation that we'll talk about, including Senate Bill 166. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Ryan to go through our brief legislative report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Ryan Romero with Capital Success Group. So this, this first slide is just a high-level snapshot of what the 74th General Assembly looked like. The, in the House, the Democrats had a 46 to 19 supermajority. Speaker Julie McCluskey, she, she's a really unique speaker because she's already served two, two terms as Speaker and we expect her to serve another, another two years. The Senate is a different story. The Senate Democrats had a 23 to 12 majority. However, President Stephen Fenberg is term limited. So there's a, there's an ongoing leadership. We'll call it a tussle for now, but it's heating up. So we'll see, especially after elections, where that shakes out. This session was also a little unusual in the amount of bills that were introduced. There was 705 total bills introduced. Ended up being 525 of them making it all the way through. And of those 525, 80% of them ended up being bipartisan. As far as the state budget goes, the state budget was 400, 40.6 billion dollars total. Some of the highlights of this year's budget was the elimination of the budget stabilization factor, which fully funded K-12 for the first time in over a decade. Increase of 132 million for higher education, which limited tuition increase increases to 3%. 68 million to help reduce the state's competency waitlist for psychiatric beds. 512 million appropriated to HIGPuff and 204 to DHS. Those two account for about 60%, 67% of the budget increase. And the largest pay raise to state workers in over a decade, over 6.7%.
And if I, just on that previous slide, on that competency, competency waitlist, just wanted to show you, demonstrate to you the significant impact it had on the Institute of Health and Institute of Mental Health in Pueblo. It added about 76 new jobs. Some of those aren't filled yet because we're still trying to find, you know, registered nurses, you know, we're still having that shortage in, in the workforce. But when those are fully staffed, it'll be the most significant increase we've seen at the state hospital. So really important for us in Pueblo.
And lastly, on this slide, just the four of the major topic areas where policy was a major focus this year was housing, tax policy, firearms and transportation.
And I'll, I'll switch over now to climate and air pollution. We'll talk, we're not going to talk, you know, those are the three major bills that were the focus of a much debate, a lot of advocacy by EBRAS. As you know, city council opposed Senate Bill 166, which was the major piece of legislation that would have significantly impacted EBRAS. You know, as they stated during their testimony with respect to enforcement and penalties, it would have reduced significantly their ability to do their job here in Pueblo. That bill was killed and it was because of the advocacy of Pueblo working through the governor's office. At the same time, the Senate Bill 166 was going through the, through the process, the governor was meeting with key of interest groups in order to try to find a compromise between environmental community and manufacturers. And, and they did. They ended up killing Senate Bill 166 and what the bill that ended up passing was Senate Bill 229, the ozone mitigation measure, which that really, really satisfied and it, you know, I don't know if they were, I don't want to, you know, you know, put words for EBRAS, but Senate Bill, Senate Bill, Senate Bill 166 was so important that that piece of legislation be killed that they were okay with a compromise that was, that came out of Senate Bill 229. The other one that I wanted to highlight for you is House Bill 1338. This is the one that we talked to you a lot about during the session around the environmentally equity, environmental equity and cumulative impact. We were worried that without local control and local ability for the city to say something that we might be designated along with Commerce City is one of those impacted communities. For the most part, House Bill 1338, we were able to get most of the worst parts of, of the local, you know, taking local control away. And what the governor promised in the language in 1338 is that CD-PHE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, will reach out and will hold stakeholder. And that's one of the things we're going to follow for you this year, and I'll talk to you about our, our summer meetings. But that's one we're going to really have to follow to make sure that they hold some of those meetings here in Pueblo to gather impact. We, we, we're pretty sure that Commerce City is going to be designated, but we certainly don't want Pueblo to be designated.
A few, a few highlights from public safety. You can find all of these bills that we're going over in our presentation today in our year-end report that we sent. We just wanted to highlight a few of them. This first one, House Bill 241093, Peace Officer Certification Requirements. This was carried by a couple of Southern Colorado delegation members, Representative Martinez and Senator Hendrickson. It expands the eligibility for provisional peace officer certification by removing the exclusion for armed force peace officers, allowing them to obtain a provisional certificate. This one made it through relatively easily and has already been signed by the governor. Next up is House Bill 241372, Regulating Law Enforcement Use of Prone Restraint. This is one that we talked about at a handful of work sessions. A lot of work was done. A big thank you to the Chief of Police for coming up and testifying, keeping us well informed and all of your feedback. The bill ended up making it through, but each iteration of it got a little bit better. And the final, the final piece of legislation was something that the Chiefs of Police Association, I think begrudgingly said they could live with. So a lot of good work went into that one. Next up is House Bill 1079, Persons Detained in Jail on Emergency Commitment Expansion. Requires that juveniles in protective custody due to substance influence be taken to an emergency medical services facility, not a jail. And this bill adds a lot of reporting to, that will be due to the BHA. And last but not least is Senate Bill 24131 prohibiting carrying firearms in sensitive spaces. This is one of the handful of firearm bills that was introduced this session. This bill prohibits the carrying of firearms in designated public places including certain government buildings and courthouses with exceptions for authorized personnel and establishes penalties for violations. Next slide.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Alec Romero with Capital Success Group. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with all of you. So it's no surprise that the legislature and the governor prioritized housing again this session. After the major land use bill, Senate Bill 213, failed to get across the finish line last year, the strategy shifted towards developing a lot of those policies in separate pieces of legislation. And one of those priorities involved a policy on ADUs. So the ADU policy requires that subject jurisdictions permit 1ADU as an accessory, accessory use to single-family homes. This allowance must be subject to an administrative approval process and it applies to all areas within a jurisdiction that permits single-family homes. Subject jurisdictions will have increased costs to revise land use codes and zoning to accommodate this ADU requirement. That's the stick and the carrot involves two different grant programs. ADU supportive certifications will be eligible for additional grant assistance to implement strategies to encourage the development of ADUs. To access these grant programs, local governments must be supportive, certified as ADU supportive. This involves submitting a report by June 30th, 2025 and every three years thereafter. To become certified, subject jurisdiction must adopt at least one strategy or more to be competitive. That encourages ADU development. Some of these strategies include reducing fees for low and moderate income households, preapproving ADU construction plans, providing homeowner education and technical assistance, regulating short-term rentals, incentivizing accessible ADUs and promoting factory-built ADUs. Moving on to the next bill, this bill came out of discussions regarding 213 as well in terms of how can local governments and the state plan better with more coordination when it comes to housing. This was a major bipartisan effort with many stakeholders involved in the design of this policy, including CML. So Senate Bill 174 requires DOLA to create a comprehensive statewide report that analyzes current and future housing needs, population growth projections, areas of high risk of displacement and other land use considerations. Additionally, it requires local governments to conduct and publish their own housing needs assessments. Certain local governments will also have to develop housing action plans to DOLA, detailing their strategy to address housing needs to support compliance with this bill. DOLA will be offering technical assistance through a grant program. The next bill you see on your, on the slide before you is 1304. This prevents local governments, starting in June 2025, from establishing or enforcing minimum parking requirements for multifamily residential developments within a quarter mile of transit routes. Those, that transit route map will be published by DOLA in September for all of you to review and be, be in compliance. Local governments will have to submit a report to DOLA to demonstrate compliance with the bill. There is an exception when it comes to multifamily residential developments that have 20 or more units. You would be able to reassert your control in enforcing a minimum parking requirement. If it had 20 or more units, you would have to demonstrate a substantial negative impact if there were no parking requirements in place. Lastly, we wanted to highlight one of the first bills that was signed by the governor, 1007. This bans local residential occupancy limits, which are stick the number of unrelated people that live together that are not health and safety related. This goes into effect July 1, 2024. Moving on to the economic development, real quickly, we wanted to highlight a number of bills that we believe will benefit the city of Pueblo in terms of economic development. This slide shows significant public policy from this session with a focus on childcare, taxes, education and workforce development. Well, stay there. So childcare, there's a big emphasis this year. 1237, it creates three new programs within DOLA to assist local governments in developing childcare facilities. It essentially creates a framework to provide planning and capital grants and technical assistance for local governments, higher ed, public schools, employers, private partners, builders and childcare providers to help reduce the cost of developing childcare facilities. 1223, they made some improvements to the CCAP program. The bill introduces several changes, co-payment cap of 7% on family income by July 1, 2026. This is dependent on future federal funding. It also includes a pilot program for unlicensed providers starting in July 1, 2025. The main purpose of this pilot program is to expand the pool of eligible childcare providers by allowing unlicensed providers to seek licensed exempt status. The state has allocated an additional 21.1 million dollars towards this program. One notable provision is the exclusion of certain types of payments from being counted as income when determining or redetermining eligibility for childcare assistance during the budget process, the JBC allocated an additional 21 million to continue family and provider-friendly policies that were put in place during the pandemic with one-time stimulus dollars. This funding supports lower parent copays and continues funding to providers based on enrollment and not attendance as well as the retention of stimulus-funded staff and funding for caseload increase. A couple other bills I want to highlight on that slide is 1312. This is a state income tax credit for care workers. This bill establishes a state income tax credit for childcare and direct care workers offering 1,200 or 2,400 for eligible individuals from 2025 through 2028. Senate Bill 228 in the taxes section there, this bill came out of negotiations with the governor in exchange for the major tax credit policies you see. It reintroduces income tax reduction mechanism based on the Tabor surplus. So it potentially reduces the rate by up to 0.15 percentage points and decreases the sales tax from 2.9% to 2.77%. The governor has signed this bill. Another big tax credit bill I want to highlight, it's two of them. It's 1134, the earned income tax credit and the family affordability tax credit. The earned income tax credit increases the match to 50% of the federal earned income tax credit for 2024. It merges childcare tax credits into a single, more generous credit starting in 2026. And these changes are designed to provide greater financial support to low-income working families. 1311 is a refundable tax credit as well for families with children under 16. This bill is effective from 2024 to 2033. The credit amount is based on income and is tied to state revenue growth, ensuring it adjusts with Tabor refunds. This measure aims to make raising children more affordable for lower-income families and research has shown it has the potential to cut child poverty and rates in Colorado by half. Senate Bill 233, this is the major property tax bill that came out of the Commission on Property Tax that was created during the special session earlier this year. It essentially reduces residential and commercial property rates while ensuring that local school funding is maintained with a separate assessment rate. Starting in 2026, it includes an adjustable exemption of 70,000. The taxable value of homes will be reduced by 10% of up to the first 700,000 on a home. So this adds a level of progressivity to the tax, property taxes. Owners of low income and moderately valued homes will see a relatively higher property tax relief in future years. 1448 is a new public school finance formula. It revamps it to better support rural schools, schools at-risk students, special education and English language learners. It's set to begin in the 2025, 2026 school year and it will phase in over six years, directing more resources to historically underfunded school districts. This is a major bill in the education section there, 1340, Incentives for Post-Secondary Education. I wanted to highlight this one. It allows individuals who fam, whose families make less than 90K a year or less to attend college for free for the first two years. Starting in 2025, it offers a refundable state income tax credit to Colorado high school graduates enrolling in in-state higher education institutions. So students would have to pay the tuition first. They'd receive the tax credit the following year. 1439, in terms of workforce development, the bill introduces tax credits and grants to support apprenticeships, particularly in new and emerging, emerging industries. It includes a refundable tax credit for employers and establishes two grant programs to expand apprenticeship opportunities across the state.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, 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 we have plenty to talk about. We apologize for going over President Aleph, but that's, we've got a more comprehensive report that we submitted to you, but those are the highlights. We apologize for, for going over a little bit on our presentation.
You're fine. You're fine. And thank you so much for all that you guys did in the last year. Quick story, when I first got on city council, I got an email one day. This was six years ago. And I said, hey, come on down to, we're having, we're meeting with the lobbyist over at the police station. If you want to, if you want to come, go ahead and, and come. And I, I was brand new on city council and I said, geez, that sounds like a lot of fun. So I'm going to go down and meet with the lobbyist. And we went into the community, community room at the police station. And sure enough, there was the lobbyists that the city had hired at the time and, and all of the department heads. And then they went around and asked all the department heads, you know, what, what kind of ask do you want from the, the state? And, and we got very, there really wasn't an update on anything that was going on. It was just a matter of what do you guys need? And then after that, and this was literally within the first 30 days that I was, the, I was elected. And for the next four years, we never saw a lobbyist again, never heard from a lobbyist, were never included with a lobbyist. So I think that this, that the way that it works now is, is incredible because we're included, we're involved. We, we, we know what's going on. We're not guessing. We're getting updates and we're able to participate in our state government in a way that we never were before. And this is what government should look like. It should be inclusive and it should be everybody that are the stakeholders need to be a part of it. And the other great part is, is that when you give us these updates all through the session, that it's public, that it's recorded, it's on TV, it's either on TV or on Facebook. And so the entire community can hear the updates because quite frankly, before now, we never got any of those updates. Whether you were a citizen or you were a politician, I mean, it was, it was just a matter of not getting that information. So this is really a, a, a great step in the right direction, in my opinion. I think you guys did an outstanding job of keeping us informed, asking us for our input. And, and, and I always felt included in the process and, and always felt that I could send an email or ask a question, make a phone call or whatever and get those answers, those questions answered. So.
I mean, it means a lot to us, President Aleph.
I just wanted to say that and I, I hope this relationship continues and that it can only get better, right?
That means a lot to us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you guys. So that's my rant. Anybody else got anything? Uh, Council Martinez.
That was a lot. Thank you. And now at least you have a couple ones to, for vacations, right? To get all the sleep that you missed.
Well, you know, in, in our, looking forward, you will see there are going to be a lot of ballot initiatives that will impact.
Can you talk about that, this slide, Gil, actually? Can you talk about this slide?
Pardon me?
Can you talk about this slide? I know that this was.
So we, I, I didn't want to take more time than we had. And so I, so for, for looking forward, several things. One is some of the bills that passed this year that we tried to kill, but remove forward. For example, the climate bill, CD-PHE is going to be doing things during the summer that we'd like to keep you advised about. The ballot initiatives this year are going to be critical, including property tax. Could, you could wipe out some of the legislation. We, what we'd like to do with your permission, President Aleph and, and Mayor and counselors is we'd like to still not, maybe not every week, but report to you whatever you think would be, you know, whether it's once a month, but, but we, we would really like to, you know, to keep you advised on the ballot initiatives. There are not as many interim committees this, this summer because of elections, but there are some that are going to be meeting around workplace violence around healthcare professionals. around healthcare professionals that we'd like to, to keep you advised on. And then just to keep you up to date on some of the election activities. So whatever you think would work, whether it's every other week or, or once a, a month, but there's going to be a lot and the ballot initiatives will be submitted in August and we'll get a better idea of how those will impact the city.
Do we have an idea right now about ballot initiatives? I know that Councilor Flores talked a little bit about the front range rail possibly being that. Do we, do you have another ideas?
My understanding, Councilor Flores might know a little bit more about this than I, but they are going to delay a ballot initiative on that for two more years.
But you could speak to the property tax.
And yeah, and then the only other one that, you know, is starting to get some press is Proposition fifty. And it's essentially going to wipe out all, all the work that the legislature did in their property tax commission this year. You know, they met all throughout the year. In the final weeks, they took their recommendations and put it into a bill. And, you know, not everyone was happy with it. It was, it was, it, it, it's got mixed reviews and, you know, the implementation is going to be slow. And so, you know, the people that are running Proposition fifty, they, they, they want more and they want it quicker. So, but that'll be up to the voters. And, and there's likely going to be others that, that have to do with property tax that could, could conflict with that as well. Yeah.
I'll just add, if, if any of those ballot measures get passed by the voters, then Senate Bill two thirty three will automatically get repealed.
Can you remind me what Senate Bill two thirty three is?
That's, that's the major property tax bill that Ryan just spoke about, that they put a lot of work into it, had a ton of bipartisan support, bipartisan sponsors. They, they put a ton of work into it, but ultimately the, the voters are going to decide this November.
Nice. For the ADU, I, so first of all, I think I really liked how you touched on all of the ones that were really important because, one, I always forget the numbers on all of the bills. Kudos to you for always remembering them, remembering them. And then two, reading is a lot. And so I think that your side hustle this summer or during the next ledge session should be a podcast that you can cover all of those. And so that way we can listen to it and not just like read it. Okay, for the ADU grants though, that you talk, I think you talked about a little bit, Alec, or Ryan, strategies to become ADU supportive. For this mayor's office, do we have any of those, those strategies already in place to be qualified as ADU supportive?
I don't know. I'll have to ask Scott.
I'd be curious because we're, we're already like positioning for Prop one, two, three funds. And if that, if those strategies are aligned, then we can already hit the ground running on grants for ADUs. So that would be interesting. And then I guess I'm curious for next session, what needs to be changed with our relationship? You know, I, I, I think that we definitely had a bigger voice than in years previous that I'd done on council. But do you have any recommendations on what, you know, for quality improvement purposes, like what can we be doing better?
Well, and we would appreciate your input, you know, we appreciated the comments of President Aleph, but what we'd like to be able to do is, you know, closer to the session, maybe in the fall is, you know, have a, a work session with you that would give us a little bit more time to, especially with some of these ballot initiatives. You know, we're constantly trying to improve the, the technology we have, I, you know, with the, the bill tracker. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that. But just to sit down, just, and I, I think the Monday work sessions, you know, you know, every Monday were really, really good. But if you can help us think about anything else that might be, you know, you know, that would work better, that would be less information for you to read, but still timely. We try to do, you know, a synopsis of the, the more complicated and the, the bills that are much more comprehensive, but, but it, it would be nice, because we didn't do that this, this year, we just started in the session, but to maybe just do a work session and sort of give you our, our ideas, because we'll be hearing from legislators about proposed legislation probably starting in September. So that would be nice to have a work session in the fall to, to start that process. But we'll, we'll think about that. If you can give us a, you know, we're, we're still digesting and governor's still signing bills, but give us some thought and we'll try to get, send you some suggestions that we think might improve the process. And if you have some things that you think would help, please let us know.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I, you know, I think it'd be interesting to know what five bills people are thinking before the session. So if we could get a grasp on that, but you know, in the fall, that would be awesome. Have you heard of any five bills that people are going to revive?
No, I, I think there's going to continue to be more work around the economic development, especially, you know, they did a, 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 there was a number of bills that were introduced that involved trying to reduce the, the, the table refund so that, you know, that, you know, there would be tax credits and some of those were good things. There are some, you know, issues around the budget for next year. Now that, you know, most of the ARPA monies are gone. So we'll, we'll start to hear some more of that and, and we'll try to get you that information. That's why I think we should still continue our meetings, even if they're once a month or, or, or bi-weekly, if they're every other week, just so that we can let you know what we're hearing is happening in the Capitol.
I, as far as remaining meetings for the rest of the year, I think I'd leave that up to you. If you think that you need to be on every two weeks or three weeks or every month, just get with the mayor, mayor's office with Chief of Staff McCain, who can share that with the, the work share and get you scheduled.
Okay.
But you're going to know best on how many times we need to, to hear from you.
Well, we want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not, you know, we, you know, we know that you're really busy. We might start and we'll suggest that to the mayor's office, maybe at least once a month and, and maybe give us a little bit more time rather than the fifteen minutes. You know, you know, twenty or thirty minutes, you know, whatever you're able to allocate for the work session. But we'll make those thirty minutes count for once a month.
That makes sense. Council Flores?
All right. I too want to echo what our president Aleph echoed to you, and that is that you, this is really a new day, I think, for the city of Pueblo utilizing your services. Because I've never been as engaged ever with this much information. But two things I wanted to talk about. Yes, I serve on the Front Range Passenger Rail District and there was a bill this year, but it was just a cleanup bill. There was a lot of, because it's such a new district. But during the last six months, we have been asking our consultants to be looking at a variety of information, including surveys. And it was clear about a month ago that this issue would, would, it was not ready to be put on the ballot. It was just too many outstanding questions, too much confusion. Then you have all these various counties that weren't on the same page. Even though the governor wanted it in November, we, we did convince him that it just wasn't a good time. So we're going to wait until two thousand twenty six. And we think we have a better shot at that point because it's going to be a very large infrastructure bill that's somewhere between three to four billion dollars. And so it's going to, it has to be the right time. And, but anyway, that decision was just made last week, really. We, we finally voted on that. I think it was last Friday. And we've postponed it until two thousand twenty six. So that's correct. And there's lots of preliminary work that needs to be done. So that's going to be our task for the next two years. I wanted to talk about the tax bill. And I don't think it's hit people yet completely, but in just taking our county, I mean, we're, we're looking at probably twenty five to thirty percent increases in assessed values. And so in my mind, people are still not fully engaged because if you have a mortgage, your bank is making the payment on your taxes. And as soon as they make those adjustments on your escrow account, everybody's going to wake up and determine that, wow, I didn't, I didn't believe that my house payment was going to go up a hundred dollars. And that doesn't even bring in the insurance problems. But is this bill? All right. Well, let me take a step back. Most counties have the ability to make adjustments on the property tax side by reducing the mill levy. Is this bill tied in to giving permission, I guess, to counties? Or mandate that they reduce the mill levies in the counties?
My understanding, if I can recollect on last year, they did pass a bill that gave counties the authority to reduce those mill levies and then put them back up. So they would be able to do that.
But we have to, we're really looking at making sure that this bill passes in November. Yeah. But in the meantime, there is no relief, other relief. I noticed it was another bill.
Well, the ballot initiative could change everything.
Sure.
Yeah. And that, that's the one that we're going to have to really look at. Because, you know, as Alex said, they want, they want some of what is in the bill that passed faster. And they'd like to see, you know, rather than, you know, lowering the increase, actual decreases. So I, it's, it's going to be a potpourri of whatever that bill looks like. And so we'll have to, you know, you know, we'll obviously give you our opinion and, and I know your constituents are going to be asking you about, asking you about these ballot initiatives. So we want to, to give you, you know, the information that you need in case you get asked those questions at town hall meetings or whatever. So we'll, we'll know what those, those bills look like in August. And that's why I said that's when we'll, you know, really have, you know, more substantive information to give council.
Yeah, that'll be a bill I'll be watching from now until November.
Everybody, everybody obviously is concerned.
So if you get information on that, if you could send it to us, we'd be grateful. That's all I have. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council Gomez?
Yeah, I'm being a law enforcement kind of nerd here, but was there, and I'm just trying to follow the stuff. I can just claim being a newbie for so long because we're going into our fifth, sixth month. Was there a concerted effort to raise the threshold for what constitutes maybe the parameters of particular crimes? And were crime penalties lower that you know of? And if you know which ones? I don't mean to throw all that at one, but I'm just kind of concerned about it.
We, we can follow up on that. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate this year about decriminalization on bills involving, you know, some drug cases, but we can get more information and get that to you. I don't know if either Ryan or Alec have.
Off the top of my head, I, I can't recall the bill number, but we'll try to track that information down for you. Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah, I'm just kind of worried if things are being watered down. When we talk about the decrease, somebody's saying it's a decrease in crime, somebody else saying it's an increase in crime. Well, if they're playing fuzzy math with this stuff, that's what's got me concerned. I like things accurately reported. And if there's politics being played with it, I want to be, I want to be apprised of that. I just want the straight scoop. I think what a lot of citizens want. That's just how I see it.
We'll get you, there are, there are a number of bills and a number of bills that didn't make it through the process that were that, that had the, you know, the characteristic of, you know, do we want to keep this as a crime or do we want to lower the, the penalty threshold? But we'll get you. A number of those bills didn't make it through the process, but we'll get you that information.
Just one more thing. I've known Gil for what, three decades, Gil?
For, for a long time.
And I can tell you, I just feel comfortable because these guys are Pueblo, I'm telling you. And it's good to have them up there. So thank you for what you guys do.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate that. Like I said, it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Okay, Council, Council Latino, you got anything? Great job. Alec had one question. I'm going to call you on this. Progressivity, is that really a word?
I don't know.
Is this really a word? Because I'm going to go look it up and I like how you used it. It just flowed right out and I don't think that's a word. If not, it should be. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you very much, President Aleph. As I said, it's a privilege to represent the city of Pueblo and we, we really mean that. Thank you.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, we now move to the final thing on our agenda, which is Pueblo Regional Building Department responsibilities and procedures. Mr. Guerrero?
You got to find out now.
Hey, thanks for coming.
You today. I have some of my staff here, but we thought it was important. And can you hear me all right? We thought it was important to come and tell you really what the mystery is with what the building department really is. You know, there's a lot of perceptions of what the building department is, but we're here to try to kind of tell you what those, what really happens at the building department. So the presentation will cover these topics here. I'm Mark Guerrero. I'm the new CBO, Chief Building Official. I was born and raised here in Pueblo, went to all the district sixty schools, from Central Grade to Carlisle, to Keating, to Central High School. And I went off and got my license in architecture. And I worked for a number of public entities before my, and I also worked for private entities, but places like Denver Public Schools and City and County Denver, Front Range Community College, Colorado State University Pueblo, CUN Shoots Medical Campus. I was their executive director there. And then I, I found I could come back home and work as a chief building official and bring all that institutional knowledge here to help the missions of the people here in Pueblo. So that's who I am. I'm, I'm born and raised here. The commission, the, the Pueblo Regional Building Commission is created with nine members. And again, I, I have to tell people when I go do public speaking, we're not the city of Pueblo, we're not the county of Pueblo, we're our own, we're our own business, really. And we're, we're funded only by the permits fees that we collect. And so we truly run it like a small business. And the council is created by nine members, three city appointments, three county appointments, one combined appointment, a city councilperson, the county commissioner, and then the commission itself hires me and appoints me as the building department to run the whole kit and caboodle. We should really be called Southern Colorado Building Department because we are an entire region. Again, we're not just the city, we're not just the county, but you can see all the counties that are surrounding our region. And, you know, to the south is Huafino and La Sanares, to the north is El Paso, to the east is Crowley in Ontario, and to the west is Fremont and Cluster, Custer County. So you can see that our, our region is, is very big. We're going to Ryan, Colorado City and Bula and, and all these places when we're doing our inspections and we're getting permits for that. So, you know, just to let you know what that is, our mission statement is really to help people. You know, is dedicated to promoting and preserving building safety through professional and courteous service. The purpose of the department is to educate the public, enforce the minimum building code standards through teamwork and personal pride, and enhance the relationship with the public and the building community. Now here's my kind of corny thing. It's PRBD, right? Pueblo Region Building Department. P, we're going to be polite. R, we're going to research your code needs. B, we're going to build relationships and D, we're going to determine if we help you. You know, and so we're there on Eighth and Main, seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday. I want to, you know, bring in this notion that we're not a punitive police state, but instead you should consider Pueblo Regional Building Department as a community resource. And what I mean by that is that when your architects and engineers send us their drawings, there's someone that has to correct those drawings and that's who Pueblo Regional is. And what we're doing is we're reviewing it for minimum code, not maximum code, but minimum code. So we're your quality control when you hired those designers and we're showing them, you know, what errors or omissions they might have had. So before it even gets out to the site, we've already saved you some money. Once we're, got through the plan review, then we see if your contractor is a licensed contractor with Pueblo. Is he insured? Is he the right guy to send out to the site? You know, we check his ID, that sort of thing. And then once the construction starts, we do per the International Building Code, all these inspections that I have listed in there sequential, you know, and how the building goes from foundation all the way to final to certificate of occupancy. I have a crack staff. Very, very proud of the staff. We have all the divisions that an architectural group would have, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, plan review, building department, and of course our great office staff and my great assistant Arnold Montoya here. But let me tell you a little bit about these folks. But let me tell you a little bit about these folks. They are not only, where to start? The, the plan reviews and the building uh, review guys are actually had been general contractors before they came to Pueblo Regional. And then because of the international code council, they had to go through stringent certifications to become plan reviewers and inspectors. So they're general contract plus, plus. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing, they were contractors before they came to Pueblo Regional. But they're also masters in their trade. They're master electricians, plumbers and, and mechanical. And then they came to Pueblo Regional and they had to go to the international co-council and take planning and inspection. And so they're certified through them plus, plus, plus. So here you have all this knowledge and all this experience. And I'm just wondering why you would never come to Pueblo Regional first before you start your planning and your, and your uh, projects out because we'll, we're happy to sit down with you and, and show you the ins and outs. And what I didn't mention, well, maybe I did, is I'm a licensed architect. And I've done um, projects all across the country. The first trip I would do is to local building department and say, here's the project I have. What are your codes? You know, what are your amendments? What are your things? Because it was smart business sense, right? I was going to get any of those things in my drawings. So I wasn't having change orders later on. Right? One of the things that annoyed me in uh, my practice was I would do my plan, get it through plan review and then on the construction site, the, an inspector would have a different idea, right? Well, one of the things I'm proud of here at uh, Pueblo Regional is our inspectors are our plan reviewers. So not only are they doing, you know, have all these qualifications, but we're having that consistency in uh, reviewing our plans and communication and collaboration uh, with our contractors and our uh, home building community. Uh, so I'm very, very proud of them and they, they're, it's a, it's a very uh, tight staff. And we do a lot of things and you'll see what, what we're going to show you next. Uh, like I said, they have to go through international co-council. They're stringent tests. They're not easy tests. You have to study for these tests. Sometimes you don't pass the tests. I can tell you that because I'm taking them now. So, you know, we're the building, everything within the four corners of the building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, right? But we also have partners. And one of the things I've tried to do is network with the city and I meet with uh, Public Works and Fire once a month. And I meet with the county uh, Public Works uh, once a month. And the reason is, is because we are reviewing the building, but there's other uh, what we call routing agencies that need to also sign off before we're allowed to give a permit out. The fire has to sign off. Public Works has to sign up, planning has to sign up, roads and bridges, whoever it might be uh, to the address and the type of construction that you're doing. So there's this whole orchestra of things that go on. And it, it can get confusing, but we're here to help you understand how to get it through. And that's one of the things I want you to know. We're still a community resource. And why do you do that? Is so you could get this fancy uh, plaque to put in your building. It's called a certificate of occupancy. And to the right there are all the different occupancies that you could possibly have in the commercial building. Do not try this at home. This is for the experts, you know, so uh, let us, let us help you with that. Uh, what you might not also know is a community resource is uh, occasionally, well, every year the state fair calls us and says, hey, we have, I don't know, how, a thousand plus tents uh, to put up. And so our entire electrical vision goes out and validates and inspects and make sure all those cords that are in the water and all that are code compliant. You know, that's one of the things we do. We also do it for uh, the Chile and Frona Festival. You know, and it's a, it's an effort, I'm telling you, because it, it comes that fast, that sort of thing. But those are some of the things you might not know a building department does. Uh, we support our first responders when there's emergency calls. Uh, they need us to come out and validate whether the building is uh, needs to be condemned or posted. Uh, you know, uh, that sort of thing. So uh, they call us, we have an on-call of six, seven people that, I mean, usually it's two in the morning type of thing. You know, so our, we're set up that way and we respond to the city and we work well with them. Just recently, we uh, are in um, working collaboratively with the city to enforce uh, occupancy and health violations. We're not the health, we're occupancy, we're the building. So we were part of that whole orchestrated uh, deal that happened with the value state. And it was very well planned and we were happy to be part of it. And we hope that's more, uh, well, not, we don't hope that this more, but we were able to really refine our uh, inspection skills of what we were going to do and be organized by the time we went out there, we just hit the ground running. And it's paying off. Because we've already talked to the owner of the value state, they're ready to redevelop and they want to do it actually as a fast track sort of thing. They want to convert their lobby into an Ace Hardware. They want to keep the blue section over there as a hotel. The gray sections is going to probably be more long-term stay or uh, or apartments with the lease leases. So they need to come through us because that's a change of use. And again, when they go through the permit process, we have our partners with health and fire and planning and zoning that we can get this done in a safe and, and uh, expedited way. Um, when there is a condemned building, there's due process that we have to follow and man, is it lengthy. And it usually takes about a year. And there's a lot of fourth amendment rights that need to be uh, followed. Uh, if, if it's a goner type of building, we could probably get it done in eight months. But by ordinance, we, we follow this flow chart in uh, the condemnation of buildings. Um, we have what's called a board of appeals. So uh, you can imagine we have the building, mechanical, electrical and plumbing board. And they're made up of five people and you could see the qualifications there. There are contractors and journeyman and uh, and uh, engineers that are on the board and they're there for appeals. Uh, and there's three um, qualities of an appeal and uh, the intent of the code or the rules legally adopted uh, has been incorrectly interpreted. So a citizen can, can go to a board. Uh, the provisions of code do not fully apply. Or if there's an equal or better uh, form of construction is proposed, sometimes uh, the building official will in um, cooperation with the, the appellant uh, go to the board and say, we think this is an okay way to do something and we actually approve this. But what the board cannot do, what you and I can't do, and what the commissioners can't do is we can't override code. Those are the laws. It's like a red light, you know? So that's, that's how we do that. Uh, legislation, I was here about a month ago because we were updating our electrical and our plumbing codes. And, but just not accepting those, what we did is I went to our boards that were made up of electricians and plumbers. And I said, here's the new codes. Let's get it out to the community. Let's figure out. Are they really such, is it really such a big deal or not? And can we uh, can we communicate that? And so at the end of the day, after we had a couple of months discussion of the new codes, I asked them to write letters of reference so they can prove to you uh, the value of updating the new codes. The, those also help us historically with uh, ISO and, and, and insurance and when we're going to get grants and so forth. So it's important to keep those modern. And then just as a business sense, these codes are compatible with what Colorado Springs doing. So you saw our region. Colorado Springs is five times bigger than we are. So if you have all of our contractors coming from Springs to Pueblo, we're all in the same code, the engineers are on the same code. It makes a lot of business sense that we're doing it the correct way. Um, just to let you know, the first quarter of this year, our guys and women did ten thousand two hundred and fifty-five inspections. Okay? Uh, these are some statistics you can get off our website. So I'll just go through. On the left is actually one of our uh, print, prime home builders that uses our sta- statistics for their own business. Uh, they're a single home uh, family builder and you can see that it's down a little bit right now. So they do, they send me that newsletter monthly. And it's their own, it's their own deal, but they give the reference that we got this from Pueblo Regional. The two pie charts are uh, in twenty twenty-three, we had seventy-three million dollars of construction. Uh, of course, or the permits are just a percentage of that seventy-three. We're not making seventy-three million. That was mostly in commercial interior remodel last year. Uh, this year it's at a hundred and seventy-two million, uh, and it's new commercial buildings, uh, mostly. So that's, that's how that's working. Let's see. And that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, I know it's a late night Monday, but we wanted to come and express. And before I forget, I want to recognize my staff and I'd like uh, to introduce you to uh, Arnold Montoya, my chief uh, Assistant Building Official, Aaron Portalo, our chief uh, electrical uh, inspector. Uh, Randy Coaches, our building inspector, and Carlos Atiano is our plans examiner. These guys do a lot of work. This company does a lot of work. And what makes it easier for us is if you come see us first because it's much easier to start off on the right foot than to have to do a U-turn. And I'm here to tell you, we're here to support minimum code, but at the same time, we can't support wrong. We can't approve wrong and we won't. So uh, thank you for your time. I hope this was more enlightening and gives you an idea more of what a building department does. But I'm sure there's a lot of questions and if we need to go into depth, we can, we can talk those uh, maybe offline or come down to our, our office and we can, we can go over that. But I can open it up to any questions if you like.
Thank you. Thank you for the, for the information. I appreciate it. Uh, Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, Mark. This is a Bessmer boy, by the way. So just want to throw that out there. Um, what is a reasonable time for condemned building or a building that's on a demolition site? There's a lot more of them in my district that I can.
Yep.
And I'm just curious, somewhere around seven years, which seems to be, and I don't know how that kicks in with eminent domain and how that, that whole thing works and we can use that. But those are investment killers and they're killing my district.
Right. So we should go, we should have a, a offline conversation because it's a very lengthy process. Uh, that, that flow chart that I showed on there, that's the start of it. All right? That's the start of it. And that, that process alone takes a year to do. And it's because of due process. You know, owners have rights.
Right.
Have constitutional rights. Uh, but uh, we're actually going to be working with Chief Huber and others that were investigating uh, maybe better ways to do it from Seattle. Uh, we're limited by our ordinances and what, what we need to do. So there's always room for uh, expiration and employment or uh, improvement, but we're not, we're not there yet.
If, if you can talk to the owner of a condemned property and they're willing to somehow supplies with the deed and be relieved from those penalties and fines. Is that process in place? Are we looking at that?
Uh, you know what? Our, 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 uh, our role as the building department is to see whether the building's good or not. The whole other legality is really, once it becomes condemned, I think it becomes a city property. Then you got to find the funding to do whatever you're going to do. So I think there's a collaborative, maybe a work session we should have to talk specifically about that. Uh, and see if there's can be any refinement to what we're doing already.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Latino?
Mark, same as Counselor Gomez, I'm, I'm dealing with the same thing in District Two on the east side. We have some of those buildings that are non-occupied and uh, again, something that we need to really address.
I don't disagree. Uh, I mean, uh, we, I, I just want to say too, we're a little proud that we actually uh, are working with CSU Pueblo and we were able to get an intern uh, from them uh, to come and, and intern at the Pueblo Building Regional Department. And he went out on inspections of the east side and he saw mostly fires. You know, and then I, I know from Chief Huber and all that, that's an annoyance. I mean, if they've gone to fight the fire over and over and over again. So I think there's a conversation to be had. Uh, I think we need to be smart about where, what we've been doing and what we're legally bound to do constitutionally as far as due process and see how we can maybe uh, manipulate that and, and take that to the next level.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Yes, thanks for that presentation. I, I learned a few things tonight. It's, it's amazing. Uh, but anyway, uh, you know, one of the things that uh, Pueblo has uh, along with so many communities that are over a hundred years old. We have all these buildings around town in which the second floor cannot be utilized uh, for whatever reason. Uh, and, and most of the time it's because the building has asbestos or uh, the requirement might be that they need an elevator. I mean, all of these different things. Uh, but do you, uh, do you guys also identify asbestos? And uh, when it's, it's an existing building and they, they're asking you for a permit right, uh, to rehab the building?
No, that's not really ours, but you know, uh, as an architect, uh, we would know that any building prior to nineteen seventy should be suspected by asbestos. And the correct uh, operating procedure would be to get a report to see where that built, where that asbestos is in the building. Uh, so uh, but to maybe add on to what you're saying is I've met with developers in downtown Main Street. Uh, and we, they, they're picking our brain on how they can develop things. And one of the things I'm very happy with uh, our, our experienced staff, Carlos Atiano especially, that is, they're, they're so fluid in their knowledge. Uh, one of the things I want to say is existing buildings is a um, is a, a code deal too, which gets you out of, kind of gets you out of jail free type of thing. And we've been trying to u- utilize that because our, the, the goal that I've given my staff and myself is minimum code. When I was a practicing architect, I would tell my client, okay, I, I want to get you off with parole versus life in prison, you know, with the code. So we're gonna, we're not gonna call it a kitchen, we're gonna call it a coffee bar. You know, and that's kind of some of the things in the conversations we could have. We have to see the individual patient. Uh, maybe it's a, a beautiful uh, stone structure that has a lot of uh, fire resistance already. You know, uh, but we also have to manipulate and help the designers go through minimum code to help them get to that point.
So, so when you, you give a building permit on a, in a building that has asbestos, is that something that you have to check off? Uh, that obviously they have to go to a different um, avenue to get the asbestos issue?
So as uh, in my former life and at uh, CSU Pueblo, for example, we got asbestos in our, in our um, in our psychology building. And so we knew as the owners had the report and where the asbestos was. So yes, I would go, we would go in and bait that first. Uh, but you know, one of the things I learned as an owner is I don't abate it and clean it and then abated and clean it. If you're going to get, just get rid of it and demo it one, one bill and, and save some money that way and get it all out of there and then start fresh. So that was some of the tricks that I learned as an owner, uh, owner's rep, uh, construction executive director. Uh, so, but to answer your question a little bit more thoroughly is that uh, we have uh, partnering agencies, uh, health is asbestos and methane and all those sorts of things. So they have their opportunity when you go through the permit process to sign off on what they're doing. You know, what their requirements are for you to get a permit. And we're not allowed by ordinance, we're not allowed to give a permit out unless the fire department is signed off, unless public health is signed off. And it depends on your construction type, you know, maybe you don't go through all those agencies. But in the case that, you know, there might be a suspicion of asbestos, the, the health department would put that note on the, on the requirement.
And then uh, my last question has to do with modular construction. And we're, we're seeing more and more of that uh, where uh, people are expected, uh, well, you know, they're, they're going to put a modular home on top of a uh, slab on great kind of foundation or even a crawl space there. Are, are you guys responsible for that?
Yes, we are. If you could swing a hammer, we're responsible for it. So, but it's a little bit different uh, ballgame. It's instead of a chess, it's checkers. You know, so basically the state puts a, a tab on the, the modular and, and then we do mostly the other infrastructure and maybe the inside plumbing and all that sort of thing. So it's a combination.
So they have the same requirements as far as all of our codes?
Oh, absolutely. Cause as you can imagine, codes are based in science, right? Uh, as I read through the codes, I, I um, surprised, maybe not surprised that some of the codes developed here in Colorado, there was a family that was taking a uh, Thanksgiving vacation in Aspen and perished because of uh, CO2 poisoning. And that's when the code developed that we need to have CO2 sensors in our, in our um, And that's when the code developed that we need to have CO2 sensors in our, in our, uh, in our buildings. I was up at a seminar in legal and they said, you know, a code is developed when blood is shed twice. So everything that has an occupancy, we need to be serious about and we need to make sure that it's correct. Because that can come back on us. I mean, we need to do our due diligence in our, in our duty.
Yeah. And, and my other life, I was a risk manager and I was involved in insurance and I always bragged about Pueblo because not many cities have a protection class two, which we do in the city of Pueblo because of the response time, our water pressure and our codes, our building codes. And so uh, that saves our, uh, all of our homeowners a lot on their insurance. Uh, because most of the state, uh, especially if you're not in a, uh, you don't have a paid fire department, you have a voluntary, they're in the nine or 10. And so they're, they're paying a lot more for insurance uh, than we are. So, but anyway, I appreciated your uh, presentation and uh, thank you for what you do to help uh, the citizens of Pueblo County.
I hope that gives insight to what we do. Thank you so much.
Now, we're not done. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Apologize. So uh, development's always been a big deal to me.
Absolutely.
So it's always nice when I get somebody in here with the expertise of uh, local development that uh, can answer questions. So after the, the Great Depression of, or Depression, the Great Recession of two thousand eight, you know, when we were building hundreds of houses in the city of Pueblo, all of a sudden from two thousand eight until now, we've just been on a steady decline. Our development is nonexistent. All along the front range, we've been passed up. We missed the boom. We uh, uh, we missed the bust and, and uh, we're just stagnant. And we've been a stagnant community for many, many years. So in your expertise, not saying that it has anything to do with codes or anything else, what would you say is the main reason that Pueblo just cannot develop?
Well, uh, you know, we should call Pueblo potential. You know, I've been living here all my life and, and I, I just think there's so much potential for our city. Uh, but uh, my master's degree in my thesis was in planning and urban development. And I think we can probably be more aggressive at planning and urban development and come up with some strategies because that's a science as well. You know, uh, you have the Rust Belt cities like Cleveland and Buffalo and Chicago that have, and Baltimore that have the same issues that we have. They're depressed, they're, they're trying to get people there, but they're incentivizing. You know, if it's an historic structure, you might get a state grant. Uh, if you're a first time home buyer, you might get a, uh, you know, uh, something for the city. So I think there has to be a planned urban development or an urban development strategy of attracting people to Pueblo. Uh, of course, when economic times are great, everyone's building like crazy.
Not here.
When the interest rate is, was hor- was horrible, uh, and, and I'm talking from a, a point where I went back to my, my home street of Topaz. And I've, I own two properties now and I developed them. Uh, and I went through this building department. So it can be done and I'm, you know why? Because if I had to buy something in Denver, it's five hundred thousand dollars. You know, so there's, there's some strategies that can be uh, that I'd love to talk to, take a lunch and, and have uh, have some conversations about and uh, things that we can do. Target area development, there's redlining, there's a lot of social economic issues, what that are hurdles to folks, uh, education of even how to buy a home. You know, there's a lot of different things that, that can be, uh, I think tried. Uh, but right now, single families are down and I think that's a reflection of the high interest rates.
Based on your experience and, and your work in other communities, because you've, you've done this in other communities, right? As an architect.
As an architect in the, yeah.
So do you think that our, you know, when, when uh, Commissioner Ortiz and I started the Pueblo Means Business Initiative, you know, we had this dream that we were going to bring everybody together into the, this one place. And we were going to create this, 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 this great experience for the homeowners and the developers and so on and so forth. But like all government uh, ideas, uh, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. So what my question is, is based on other places where you've been, do you think that we're discombobulated in Pueblo City and County?
In a way, in a way.
Separation.
I, I've actually been studying that issue. You know, I'm actually the, the second chair to Zach Swanger on the Pueblo Means Business. Uh, because I've been wanting to reach out to the community and do this. Uh, and the other thing I've done is the chief building officials, my staff and I have gone up to Pike's Peak Regional to see how they do it. This uh, idea of, of being a physical place is antiquated. Uh, we are electronic now. And so what I, my hope is, is that we could have one submission, one application of electronic. And then all the agencies, the county agency, the city agency, Pueblo West can feed off of that one submission. It doesn't need to be a place, but it needs to be, have transparency. And they need to be able to talk, contact people and talk to them and have them walk, walk through the system. And it needs to be simplified, uh, simplified. So that's my, my vision. And I, I would say that it's the Ortiz vision is not lost. I think we're, it's a foundation and it's the right concept. But we need to take it to the twenty-fourth century, you know, and, and, and do it that way. And I'm here to tell you, out of towners love us. They know how to, how to call us and zoom us and teams us and, and uh, get through the process and understand what we're doing. Just like that. In town, not so much. So I think there's some education to do.
Do you hold uh, training for the in-town people?
We're uh, in the process of, we have a big uh, conference area and I just emailed my uh, my assistant building chief today because it was actually suggested from Pueblo uh, associate home builders that maybe we have a, a meet and greet and a, a question and answer and that sort of thing. Uh, I, I've been talking to a series of contractors and I want to have a, an intern development day where all the contractor sends their interns. So we could teach them how to input uh, plans in our system and track it and then go out on uh, inspections with us and see how the building department works. So it's gonna, we're, we're part, part of our, our deal is education. You know, and so uh, we're here to help uh, and why not make it easy? Cause we're free until you buy a permit. You know, so come and talk to us.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Martinez.
Mark, when you're talking about, you know, your vision is one streamlined um, application that everyone sees. Don't we have that already with the online Pueblo Place?
Uh, no. So we have three different systems. We have a Pueblo Regional system where they have to do an application. Then if you're in the city of Pueblo, you go into Pueblo Place and do an application. Then if you're at the county, you go into Pueblo Means Business and have, do an application. So there's a minimum, there's two applications if you're in the county or if you're in the city.
Given, uh, well, help me understand why the Pueblo Regional application cannot be part of the respective city and county applications.
We're not the city of count, we're not the city of Pueblo, we're not the county of Pueblo, we're our own, our own.
I understand that. I, it's just, it would be more efficient.
Uh, so then we, why can't the city be part of Pueblo? You know, so we need to work through all of that. Uh, and, and the tell, I'm here to tell you, actually the system actually works. What I'm finding is it's the people that are watching, like uh, I was watching, I was, I, I'm, I'm uh, putting, I'm, I'm tracking each and every project to see how long things take. And one of the things I'm noticing is architects and contractors, once they're getting a response that's in Pueblo Place, they're not responding. They need some sort of facilitator to be tracking and getting those. It used to be people would walk around, it's like, where's my stuff? It's, it's this day, it's Thursday, so I need to come and get my stuff. They need to do the mental shift and do that electronically. So the gizmos themselves aren't the problem. It's the project management one-on-one that's the problem.
It just seems like if we have a really great tool and you're in, you know, you spoke about the vision of having one application that can be tracked online and it's not necessarily a physical place, although I think a physical space would be amazing. Um, you know, e- even the health department, which is not necessarily city, if they're not necessarily county, they're even on the, you know, Pueblo Place and Pueblo Means Business. So it just seems like a missed opportunity to not have regional buildings, systems talking with the city system and the county system.
And, and I'm not an IT person, but the, the, the systems are talking to each other. Uh, so there's, there's a whole, there's a whole thing that we can go into and I would rather have my IT people here to kind of just explain how, how it is, it is one system in a, in a way.
Uh, Counselor Latino.
I, I was going to say, um, Councilman Aleph, we're going to have retweet, retreat coming up soon, aren't we? No, next year. So I was going to say would be really beneficial for us to include uh, Mr. Guerrero and, 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 and buildings in, in, in that, in that retreat to help us with strategic planning.
I think communication is fantastic. I want to applaud the mayor. She's actually uh, brought us in once a month for our procedural uh, sort of things. And we've been able to really make headway already on things that were kind of stagnant. Uh, our inspection, uh, annual inspection, for example, with licensing, that sort of thing. Uh, just different things we're able to talk about. This next thing is what, what we do want to talk about. We want to focus on, we want to get better. We want to be, we want it to be easy, uh, like it is all around uh, the country.
I'm just, I just want to touch on one other thing. So you're not city, you're not county, you're, you're own entity and your own business.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
So how was regional building created?
By the city and the county.
Okay. And theoretically, I mean, the city could create its own building department. So we could get our own inspectors, we could get our own whatever. If the city, it's like with the health department.
Yep.
So the city could say, we're going to bring everything in-house within the city limits of Pueblo.
Sure.
And, and run their own building department for that, for that matter, right?
City and county in Denver does that, yes.
Do they?
Yeah, it's, it, it depends on what region you're in, you know, it's all different strategies.
Okay. I get it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions? We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you guys coming and we appreciate everything you do too. That's a tough job. Uh, do we have anything else? All right. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty-two.